McComb Township. Today is Wednesday, November 16th, 2022, and I am calling this meeting of the McComb Township Board of Trustees to order. We will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carterman, we call the roll, please.
Yes, trustee Cusmano?
Here.
Trustee Lucido?
Here.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Treasurer Gillette?
Here.
Clerk Posey is not present. Supervisor Viviano?
Here. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Yes, there is one add-on item, number 12, proposed add-on request to authorize the township supervisor to sign pedestrian crossing agreement for the 23-mile and car road development.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve with the addition?
So...
I'm going to ask that item 16 be the first order of new business that's addressed. And I don't believe we need to change the sequence, but it's going to be the first item discussed in new business. Do we need to make that part of the motion, Roger? Or no? Okay. With that note?
Mr. Chairman, continuing with the discussion on the supported motion, I am in favor of the agreement for the fire chief and the deputy fire chief. However, due to the motion, the agreement's not being attached to the board packet, but provided to the board members via email, I'll be opposing the motion. I will ask questions during the discussion. However, I don't believe that the optics of not providing the citizenry and the residents with the motion, with the actual agreement is in the interest of transparency.
Mr. Chair, I believe that was added to a second email to the link.
So, to be clear, the agreements were left off the initial publishing of the agenda. That was corrected on Tuesday morning. Roger did send the board copies of the agreements, but also a revised agenda packet was published on Tuesday morning. So, the documents have been available online since, I don't know, 10 o'clock yesterday, roughly?
Late morning.
Late morning, so.
Well, for some reason, when I went to look at it earlier today, it said "See attached", and it just went on to the last. It wasn't attached. In other words, it wasn't part of the board packet when I looked.
It's there now.
Is it?
Yeah, because when you go in on your, what is this called?
Civic Plus?
The Civic Plus. It's there now if you download the packet right there, and that comes from the website, I believe.
Well, I believe trustee Cusmano wants to ensure it's available also to residents prior to the meeting. Not so much on Civic Plus, but is it possible that the link that was provided by, you know, the clerk's office in the second email, were you checking that link or were it possibly the earlier link?
No, I received it via email, and I checked the link. It said it had commented six hours earlier. This was earlier today. However, it wasn't available in the board packet that was available to the public on the website, under the trustee page.
Okay.
That's the issue. I did download a copy of it and compared it with the previous agreement, and again, I'm in favor of it. I think it's a more elegant agreement. My congratulations to whoever revised it, and my compliments to the supervisor for the improved agreement.
So, we're talking, just so everyone's clear, we're not talking the meat and substance of that agenda item yet. We're just talking about whether or not, I think trustee Cusmano was suggesting an amendment to postpone that item?
Yeah, to postpone it for, I understand it not to be time-sensitive, but to postpone it for a time certain to the next meeting. So, and having it posted for the public to view that position's agreement.
And I appreciate that suggested amendment. I'm going to oppose it to the board only because I think the agreements have been out there. They've been published publicly. I don't know what happened with your link. I just double-checked just now.
Yeah, it's there. I just wanted to know.
It's on the public side. So, and nothing has changed since Roger republished that agenda, so.
Roger, is it possible from your position right there to check the website to make sure it's public?
Yeah, we just...
Okay, so it is published.
Yeah, I believe Pete's on the web right now.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, as am I. Okay, so.
Okay, thank you.
Perhaps an old page was, sometimes Windows saves it.
Yeah, that happens. That happens.
So, I withdraw the motion to table for a date certain on that basis.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. Is there any further discussion on approval of the agenda? As amended. Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Oliver, to approve the agenda. Members, please vote. Technical problem?
It came up up there.
It did?
It's gone now.
Oh, it never came up on my screen. Okay, that motion is approved, I assume? I never saw the result.
Yeah, it was 6-0.
Okay, 6 to 0. Moving on to approval of the bills.
Motion to approve?
Because I didn't have the screen.
Trustee Cusmano will make the motion if it hasn't been made yet.
Treasurer Gillette just made the motion.
Trustee Cusmano will support.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. Any discussion on the bill run? He's driving this bus. Want me to hold it for you? It's fine, right there. Any discussion on the bill run? Okay, hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Cusmano, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 4, approval of the previous meeting's minutes from October 26th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Nevers, to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the public comment. This would be for non-agenda items. I'm sorry, I made a mistake. Agenda items only. So, if anyone who wishes to make a comment on one of the agenda items, please make your way to the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. If there's anyone who wishes to participate digitally, please raise your hand, and you will be called upon. I don't see anyone present. Is there anyone remotely wants to participate? No one. So, we're going to move on from public comment. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, move the consent agenda in its entirety?
Support.
Any discussion on the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, I had a discussion earlier with Mr. Van Tiflin, and I believe treasurer Gillette was present. And my question was whether or not the sidewalk abeyance in item 6A would be for an indefinite period until the developer or the owner of the property developed it. And I was informed that we can call it in at any time, and that this parcel is just north of the Kit Kat Club. I want to just confirm that with the civil engineer, that that's the language of the agreement.
Yes, that is correct.
So, in other words, if there is development in sidewalks, then we can insist on that link being there, and there won't be a gap by us voting on this. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is actually tied to a parcel split. So, the intention is to build some houses. So, we think that there'll be some houses there in the next few years. But if we can call that gap in at any time we want.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. There's no more questions. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a public hearing, after which I'll ask for a motion on a resolution. But the first item is a public hearing. This is for the adoption of a street lighting SAD, an amended resolution for the Rockwood subdivision and Rockwood subdivision number 2. So, at this time, I am going to open the public hearing. The time is 6:40 PM. So, anyone who wishes to make comment on the proposed amended resolution for the SAD for Rockwood and Rockwood 2, now is your opportunity to speak. If anyone who is participating remotely who wishes to speak, please digitally raise your hand. I don't see anybody present. Anybody remotely?
No, sir.
No. So, at this time, since there's no one wishes to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. The time is 6:41 PM. Now, at this time, I'm, is there, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the resolution for the street lighting SAD district amended resolution for Rockwood subdivision and Rockwood subdivision 2.
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. We've had dribs and drabs of these being updated and corrected because of deficiencies. Are we, do we have any idea how far along we are percentage-wise with having them all formulated correctly?
We've gone through them all. We think this is the last one that we have to deal with.
Thank you.
Don't make promises you can't keep.
That's right.
And going forward, has there been a checklist or some mechanism by which it won't occur in the future for future boards to have to do cleanup?
Yeah, so engineering has taken this project over. So, all of these are scrutinized by engineering staff that is involved in the plan review, and they know the lots, and they know when the development is completed, and all of those things. So, this should not happen again.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. No more discussion. There's a motion by trustee Lucido, supported by treasurer Gillette, I believe, to adopt the resolution for the street lighting SAD amended resolution for Rockwood subdivisions in Rockwood subdivision number 2. Roger, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano?
Yes. The resolution is adopted. You guys got to word that better. That's a little clumsy. Moving on to, this will be now item 16 from the agenda we're going to address next. There's a request from the supervisor's office to approve two employment agreements. These would be for the fire chief and the deputy fire chief. Is there a motion to approve these agreements?
So moved.
Support.
Jeff, are you going to present? Or am I presenting? You want to do it? Jeff's going to present for me, since he was involved in the negotiations.
So, thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. The employment agreements for the fire chief and deputy chief had not had a review since 2017. I think it was the end of 2017. Their last compensation increase under that current contract was 2018. The supervisor's office, along with the labor council, has negotiated a successor agreement for each position that includes a 2% increase beginning January 1st, 2023. Other terms in language in the attached drafts of the agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just, I want to double-check. Mr. Kelly is available. Dan, can you hear us? Is he muted? I just want to make sure he's part of the conversation in case anybody has any questions for him.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, there we hear you, Dan.
Okay, great.
So, Mr. Kelly was the attorney who drafted the agreements and was also part of the negotiations, at least from the, with Jeff and I. So, anyone has any questions about the agreements?
I have just a few questions.
Sure.
Mr. Kelly, you built and improved on the former agreement. You didn't start this from scratch. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And could you give the board and the residents highlights or summary of the changes that were made and why you suggest that it's appropriate for this position?
Yes, absolutely. So, both agreements, I would suggest that both agreements, the primary change is to change the employment to an "have-will" employment, which is more typical of a fire chief and deputy fire chief position. Secondly, we have worked in language with regard to the review and job performance for both the deputy and fire chief. In the case of the fire chief, that would be handled by the supervisor. In the case of the deputy fire chief, that could be handled by both either the supervisor and/or human resource. We've also put in better language with regard to the expiration of the contract and how that's handled. The board of trustees will be involved in that. The supervisor is obligated to notify the board of trustees as to whether or not he wishes to extend the contract beyond the three years. And then there's a timeframe of six months at that expiration when there would be a decision by the board of trustees actually as to whether or not he would extend. So, I think it's a much better contract. It's more consistent with the other directors. We've aligned some of the healthcare as well as the retirement to be in line with your other directors at the township. That's a brief summary, and I think it pretty much covers all of your issues with regards to employment of both the fire chief and deputy fire chief.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other follow-up questions, Mr. Cusmano?
No, I just want to comment that I, and I made the comment earlier in the meeting, I want to congratulate and compliment you on the work that you did with council on this agreement. It's more consistent with the agreements that we have at the college for both the president and the non-bargaining unit president council members. And I think it's a vast improvement from the way it was drafted previously. I want to thank you and salute you for that.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Any other discussion or compliments for the supervisor? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Nevers, to approve the employment agreements for the chief and the deputy chief. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, continue.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our regularly scheduled program. Item 8 on the agenda. There's a request to award a contract for the electrical improvements at McComb Corners for the new scoreboards to Allied Building in the amount of $68,253.
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to have electrical service supplied to McComb Corners Ball Diamonds for our new scoreboards. We placed this item on mitten, received three bids. At this time, we're recommending Allied Building to perform the required work. Their bid of $68,253 is the lowest bid. After our interviews, we feel confident that Allied is our best choice for this job. I've included the confirmation of process memo, the bids, and I'm available to answer any question.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. And just to remind the residents, we already purchased the scoreboards themselves.
That's correct.
This is the wiring that'll be necessary to install the scoreboards.
That's right. Everything should be ready by spring.
And how much, yeah, how much were the six scoreboards in total?
I want to say $32,000.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
So, for just about $100,000, we're going to install six brand-new,
state-of-the-art.
Digitally-controlled.
Yes.
State-of-the-art scoreboards at the McComb Corners. That sounds great.
Just a quick, kind of a softball question. Was this the lowest bid by how much?
Uh, this was the lowest bid, actually by a lot. I don't have it on me. I do. By about 70 grand. You might have it. Do you have it on you?
Yeah, it's got, it said 68, 138, and 150.
Right. We had, in going out for bid, we had anticipated a much higher number, so we were really pleasantly surprised.
It's kind of a home run with this kind of a good bid.
Softball question, home run, absolutely.
Thank you.
Every day we put up.
I don't have any words for that. Okay, any more questions? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the electrical improvements at McComb Corners to be awarded to Allied Building in the amount of $68,253. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 9 is a request to award a contract for the construction of Pitchford Park to Warren Contractors and Development in the amount of $4,49,839.60.
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Carl?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to enter into contract with a, with a general contractor for the construction of the long-awaited Pitchford Park. An RFP was placed on mitten. We received six proposals. The three lowest contractors were interviewed. The interview team consisted of supervisor Viviano, land development director Jim Van Tiflin, DPW director Kevin Johnson, purchasing specialist Janet Solomon, AEW engineer Mike Smith, and myself. At this time, our team is recommending that the contract be awarded to Warren Contractors and Development, Inc. in the amount of $4,49,839.60. Warren Contractors had the most experience with projects similar in nature. The references spoke very highly of their civil engineering background that was valuable in the problem-solving in the field. The contractor presented the township with a number of significant value engineering proposals that are being considered for cost-saving purposes. We're still hoping to break ground by the end of 2022, and we look forward to having the park completed in the fall of 2023. I've included the proposals, the results, the process of confirmation memo from the purchasing specialists. We're excited about this project. We believe all the amenities included in the park will continue to improve the quality of life for our residents. We are all available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Any questions or discussion?
I just have one question. On the bid evaluation summary, it says Warren's fee is 3.4 million, but on the request, it's 4 million. What was the difference there?
So, the bid summary is for the scope of work that was proposed in the RFP. The scope of work did not include any contingency, and when we asked for a contract, it included a 15% contingency.
Thank you.
So, that's the difference.
So, they all would have that in there if...
They all would have a 15% contingency.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if this, but the bridge to connect the park to the residential neighborhoods, is that in this particular contract or is that a separate?
It's not. It could potentially fit within the contingency and then be paid for still by the grant?
By the appropriation by the state, right.
Or we could go out to bid for it as a separate project.
Okay. Didn't know if it was covered in that amount, but thank you.
Quick question. Your company that you've chosen, roughly how many of these similar units have they done in the last 10 years?
So, they've been in business for 28 years. In their packet, they gave us 10 of their last major projects were very similar to ours. If I had to guess, I'd probably say 2025 projects similar to ours.
So, they're very known in the
Very known.
community for this.
We've checked out all the references. All the communities were very happy with them.
So, I was on the review committee, and I can speak to that a little bit. We interviewed the three lowest bidders. The lowest bidder, we had some reservations about their ability to function without a lot of work from on our part for a number of reasons. The second and third lowest bidders were almost the same. Both excellent contractors, both could have done a very good job. The sighting factor was really the level of experience that Warren has in this particular field. They have done dozens of parks, and they've gotten good reviews. They worked. What most impressively was Dahlia Park, and that was one of the parks that my colleagues and I walked around and checked out, and we modeled some of the decisions we made on designing this park after Dahlia Park, so.
Plus, a lot of the parks that they have done have the amenities that we're putting in this park. So, they did a dog park. They've done pickleball. They've done tennis. So, they're very versed in it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to award the construction of Pitchford Park to Warren Contractors and Development in the amount of $4,49,839.60. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Bert.
Thank you, Sal. Moving on to item 10 is a request to approve the contract for the 2023 Water Distribution System Reliability Study and General Plan Update with Fishback in the amount of $33,600.
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
All right, good evening, board. So, the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act requires that all townships with a water system perform a study like this every five years. What this study is going to do is it's going to ensure adequate capacity to provide reliable services, water services, to our residents. It's going to evaluate our current conditions of our system, identify any deficiencies or needs we may have, develop cost estimates for our five- and 20-year CIP, which we are currently doing. Include a computerized hydraulic model to analyze the performance of our system to find any pitfalls or improvements. The last study of this was done in 2017 by Fishback. And with this, they'll be starting with gathering data. We'll be doing hydrant flow testing in the spring of 2023 with an available draft report by July of 2023. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the contract for the 2023 Water Distribution System Reliability Study and General Plan Update with Fishback, the amount of $33,600. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 11. Request for permission to execute a cost-sharing agreement for the construction of Garfield Road extension between 22 and 23-mile roads with the McComb County Department of Roads. Total amount is $32,242,242,602, the balance of which we would owe is $410,602. We've already paid the rest. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. The schedule of how we build Garfield has changed a couple of times. Most recently, the county had decided that they wanted to try and do 24- to 25-mile road first. However, that changed more recently when we were able to secure all of the right-of-way that was necessary to do the section between 22 and 23. That's probably the most important to do as soon as possible so that we get that out of the way so that when Romeo Plank gets worked on, there's an alternate route for the traffic to go. So, what the county's proposing is a new cost-share agreement for the section between 22 to 23. They would transfer the funds that had been previously deposited by the township for the 24 to 25 to this section, and that's $2,832,000. So, the balance is what the supervisor just mentioned. That's the $410,602. If board approves the agreement tonight, the supervisor would sign the document. We would send that along with the check over to the county. The project has been bid. We're expecting construction to start sometime after Thanksgiving, so recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a single question. Is this a firm number? In other words, they can't come back and say, it's turned out to be...
Is everything out for bid, Jim?
Yeah, the other numbers that we have received for Garfield all been based on estimates. This is on an actual bid.
Okay.
They took bids in October.
The answer is that this is the final amount, final answer.
Yes. Barring a change order to the actual contract if something comes up during construction, but...
Yes.
It should be final number.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That answers my question.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I do appreciate trustee Cuzmano's question because it's been a struggle to absorb all the unexpected cost increases from projections on construction projects. You know, and the township has had a lot going on, so it's been, it's been a challenge. You know, costs have gone up so astronomically high over the last couple of years compared to what they were expected to be. You know, the inflation has hit the construction industry particularly hard, so. I'm glad to see we finally get a final number and hope that, I'm looking forward to the road getting built.
Trustee Lucido.
Do you know if this, I mean, obviously it changes the plan for twenty-four to twenty-five, but are they still planning on doing that next year, or has that kind of been bumped out of the...
The design is pretty close to being completed for, actually, the entire section between twenty-three to twenty-five. That would be what they would actually build. The township is in the process of working with one of the landowners still to acquire the necessary right-of-way to complete the whole thing. The idea would be if we can secure that soon enough, that they would send it out to bid, maybe even early next year, so that they could perhaps start construction on that in 2023 or maybe 2024, depending on the timing. But this section between twenty-two and twenty-three would go right away, and then the other one would follow as soon as we're able to get that right-of-way secured.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Lucido. One more questions? Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to execute a cost-sharing agreement for the construction costs with the McComb County Department of Roads for the Garfield Road Extension from twenty-two to twenty-three mile road. Agreement total would be three million two hundred and forty-two dollars, two hundred and forty-two thousand and six hundred and two dollars. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item twelve. This is the add-on. This is a request for, to authorize a supervisor to sign a pedestrian crossing agreement for twenty-three mile road and Card Road development. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Cuzmano supports.
Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. This particular development is the southwest corner of the intersection of twenty-three mile and Card Road. It's basically where the Bouchimis is. They're very close to having engineering plan approval and being able to break ground on a brand-new development on that property. One of the requirements of that development is that they participate with the township in the crossing of the McBride Drain, which crosses Card Road to south of twenty-three mile road. They're essentially being responsible for half of the cost of that pedestrian crossing. In this case, on the other side, the township would pick up the tab. We've identified that as a gap in the system of a high priority, and we would like to get that done as quickly as we can. So this agreement was worked out between their attorney, the township attorney, and in my department. We're recommending approval. If the Board approves this tonight, then that development would kick off with a deposit with the township, an initial deposit. And then we would authorize our engineering firm to start the design work for the bridge, so that we can go through the permitting process. We're anticipating the permitting process to take a while just because of our experience on some other projects. So we're thinking that this bridge could probably go in in 2024. So with that, we're recommending approval of this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any discussion or questions? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Cuzmano, to authorize the township supervisor to sign the pedestrian crossing agreement for the twenty-three mile road Card Road development. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item thirteen is a request to promote Crystal Kozak to Assistant Township Engineer. That was tough to say.
Isn't she already the assistant?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support. We got the support. Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. Human Resources was asked to post a position of Assistant Township Engineer. The position was posted in compliance with the Ask Me CBA. There was one applicant for this position. Jim Van Tiflin and myself are seeking approval to promote Crystal Kozak to this position. The effective date will be tomorrow, November seventeenth, and this is a budgeted position, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Is there any questions or discussion?
Just to note that she's had her official duties expanded recently, so I think this is appropriate promotion.
Thank you, trustee, Treasurer, what's your name? Any other questions, discussion? Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Nevers, to approve the promotion of Crystal Kozak to Assistant Township Engineer. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Next item is a request to promote firefighters to fire sergeants. We have four positions that we are suggesting. Is there a motion?
Motion to promote all four is proposed.
Support. Mr. Tabaka.
Again, thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. HR Department posted the positions of fire sergeant due to the negotiated contract with the IFF. The positions were posted in compliance with the IFF Collective Bargain Agreement. There were seventeen applicants for these positions. The candidates were put through steps outlined in the CBA. Out of those seventeen, we interviewed five, and we're asking to promote four of them. One is David McGee, Chris Gruner, George Lemus, and Jim Peterson. These promotions would be effective November twentieth of 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you.
I will say one comment. I was on this review committee, and we had five exceptional applicants. Even our visiting fire chief commented that how difficult it was to choose between such five great candidates, so we got some really good firefighters in our township. We should feel pretty lucky. Any questions or discussion? There's a motion by trustee, I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong one. Motion by trustee, Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido to promote firefighters Gruner, Lemus, McGee, and Peterson to the rank of fire sergeant. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And the last item of the night is item fifteen is a request to approve the zoning ordinance update. This would be Article fourteen for Flex Use District. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board. One comment quickly. That's a typo. It's actually Article twenty-eight is what it would be if approved. So as we adopted the new master plan earlier this year, one of the things that came out of that was a new zoning category for flex zoning. So we had to create the language that would control what can and cannot happen within the flex zone. That's the language here. Essentially, it gives a little bit more flexibility for the landowners for what they can and can't do with the land, as well as has some built-in fail safes to help protect the neighboring landowners, to make sure we're not putting something next to something else that we wouldn't want there, with, at least without it being properly buffered or landscaped to separate the uses. This did go to Planning Commission and had unanimous support for recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the zoning ordinance update for Article twenty-eight Flex Use District. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our second public comment of the evening. This would be for non-agenda items. If there is anyone present who wishes to speak, please make your way to the microphone. Anyone who is participating remotely, please digitally raise your hand. I don't see anybody present. Is there anybody remotely? No. So we are going to move on from public comment to board comments. Trustee Lucido.
First off, congratulations to Crystal and her promotion. All four of the new, the firefighters that have been promoted, congratulations. To the chief and deputy chief, it's not a promotion, but congrats on your new contract. And glad to see the ball rolling on Pitchford. That's it for me.
Thank you, trustee Lucido. Trustee Nevers.
Yes, I would like to congratulate Crystal and the new sergeants that we have. We have a wonderful fire department. I just had a recent experience with having a couple officers come to the house, and it was a wonderful experience, so I'm happy for them. And Pitchford Park, yeah, it's on its way.
It's coming.
And Garfield, finally. It seems like I've, I've been on this board forever, and we've been talking about this expansion, and so I'm happy that it's break ground soon. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nevers. Trustee Oliver.
Same thing. Crystal, you definitely deserve it. You worked hard. Thanks for the firefighters to step up and apply. And the chief also. Congrats on the chief and assistant chief, and again, like Dancy says, Garfield is on the horizon. We can see it, and that's it.
Thank you, trustee Oliver. Trustee Cuzmano.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Cuzmano. Treasurer Gillette.
I too am very thankful that we have Crystal and our employee, and great to be, she's promoted, and also just appreciate the firefighters that we have, the employees we have, and I really sucks to kind of go after everybody else because we all, I think, are on the same page. We, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. For clerk comments tonight, we've asked Deputy Clerk Cardamom to give us a summary of the election.
Thank you. The turnout in the township was sixty-one point six percent of township-registered voters had their voices be heard on November eighth. That equates to forty-four thousand six hundred and forty-six voters. Of that number, eighteen thousand eight hundred and forty-three voted by an absentee ballot, and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and three went to the polls on election day. So percentage-wise, forty-two percent voted absentee, and fifty-seven point eight voted at the polls on election day. For sake of comparison, McComb's turnout is always high, which is a great thing. The statewide turnout was fifty-four and a half percent. Countywide, same thing, fifty-four point seven. So sixty-one point six percent, well above the state and county average. To compare ourselves to some of our larger neighbors within the county, some smaller, some larger, Shelby fifty-nine point nine, so a few percentage points lower, Clinton fifty-two point seven, Sterling fifty-one, Warren forty-eight. Again, McComb's turnout was higher than other larger communities within the county. We had a very, very high percentage of return of the absent voter ballots that were issued. It was ninety-three or ninety-five percent. Ninety-five percent of those that were issued were returned, which is a very, very high return rate. We were not sure with the new law allowing all registered voters to vote an absentee ballot without reason exactly how many would come back, because a lot came back late in the ballgame, so to speak, on the day before election day, and about thirty-three hundred came back on election day as well. Clerk Posey would like to thank the school districts for their hospitality and cooperation, as well as the Clinton-McComb Public Library. She would also like to thank the township departments, all of them, for their cooperation, especially Jason Gully and the DPW staff for their invaluable assistance. Clerk Posey would also like to thank the four hundred election inspectors who make sure democracy works for all of us, and of course, the voters of the township for showing up, whether they voted by absentee ballot or at the polls, to participate in our representative form of governance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardamom. For my comments, I want to congratulate Sergeants Gruner, Lemus, McGee, and Peterson. Very excited that we have, are filling in the rest of our command structure at the fire department and the great opportunities that will afford us. Congratulations to Crystal. In all seriousness, you're very well deserved, and you now have to take even more of my crap, so. And some of the yachts. I want to remind all the residents that the township offices will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-fourth for Thanksgiving, and Friday, November twenty-fifth. We will reopen on Monday, November twenty-eighth. I also want to congratulate the clerk and her staff, Roger and Ed, and everybody that was involved. You just heard what a high turnout we had, yet if you check the county website, you'll see that our results were posted earlier than most other communities, and I could say that the only reason they were posted later is because I think the county didn't post them for a couple of hours after we had actually turned our results in, so. It was quite impressive to be an observer here in Town Hall while that machine was in operation. They did a fantastic job up and down the line, right from the clerk's office to all four hundred of those volunteers working in the precinct, so. Thanks to everybody that made that possible, and it's very gratifying to know that our community is more politically engaged than every other one in the county. And with that, the last thing I want to mention is December second, we have our tree lighting, so I want everyone to get that on their calendars now. Lots of great things, crafts for the kids, music, the lighting itself. There's a rumor that Santa might show up, so. Please mark your calendars, and we'll remind you again at the next meeting about that. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Nevers, to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote.
The whole computer went dead over here.
Peter votes yes to adjourn the meeting.
Yes, adjourn. It's just not on.
That motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.